Good evening, everybody. Diane Logan, a citizen of the town of Clifton, State of Maine, County Penobscot. Greetings. In the name of the state, State of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the voters of the town of Clifton to qualify to vote on the town affairs to assemble at the Clifton Town Office. That's one three five year I wrote, Town of Clifton, County Penobscot, State of Maine, on Article 29, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Then, and to act on Articles One by written ballot, then we'll proceed to Article Number Two. So Article Number One, to choose a moderator to preside over said meeting.
I make a motion that we appoint Christie Crafton as the moderator.
I'll second that.
So we're going to pass on. You guys got that? That was warranted, so if you approve, you write down that name or somebody else's name. Okay, 28th Mayor Christie Crafton, one for Dave Asbury. So hand it over to you. I, Christie Crafton, do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and this state so long as I shall continue to be a citizen thereof. I, Christie Crafton, do swear that I will faithfully discharge, to the best of my abilities, the duties incumbent on me as a moderator of this meeting according to the Constitution and the law of the state. Oh, good evening. I'm Christie Crafton. We, I call to start with, I'm going to be using the Maine Moderators Manual tonight. If there are any objections to that. Seeing none, I will be using the eighth edition of the Maine Moderators Manual. We have one thing to discuss tonight. And just to cover some ground rules, because it's a town meeting, only residents can speak and vote. If you're here and you're not a resident, you can't vote. But if you wish to speak, we need to have a two-thirds vote of the residents who are here to approve you to do that. So if you're not a resident, just raise your hand. Let me call on you. Let me know what you mean approval. We'll start, I will read the article that is being discussed tonight. I'll ask for a motion in a second to open it. I will then open the debate. During the debate, just to keep things kind of orderly, I will call upon you. If you'd like to speak, raise your hand. I do ask that we speak one at a time. I ask that we be respectful and not interrupt each other. Please keep your language in mind, no name calling, anything like that. I know sometimes these things can get pretty heated. When you speak, and we don't have a microphone, but if you could stand up, speak as loud as you can, just so everyone can hear you. And once we have concluded our discussion, we will vote. I believe you all got slips of paper when you came in. So when we ask for a vote, you'll raise that up. It's going to be an open vote, we will count. And then I will announce the results of that vote. All right, so we have Article Two. Shall the town appropriate from the town's share of the Piscatawkey Mountain Tax Incremental Financing TIF an additional amount of $130,000 to finalize the Chick Hill Road capital road improvements? The select board recommends $130,000. Do I have a motion to open discussion?
I make a motion that we open discussion, limiting it to 20 minutes, each person getting three minutes.
I'll second.
Okay. So a motion has been made to limit discussion this evening, to three minutes per person and a total of 20 minutes discussion, which I believe is consistent with policy of the town regarding meetings. We will have an open vote, we need a two-thirds vote in order to enact that. So all those in favor, if you could raise your colored paper.
So only seven people were up at the top.
Only seven.
Okay, all those opposed? All right, so we have a two-thirds vote, it would be 26 to 12, I think it's a number, 26 to 13, so that is a two-thirds vote. So that is first. That is not my strong point. If I mis-calculated that, please tell me. If we are in discussion, this is a motion that can be revisited and amended. So if you, as a town, decide that you no longer want to impose this time limit, you can make a motion to amend it and revisit it, and we can vote to take that time ago. All right, so we will now open discussion. Do you have a statement you want to read?
Yep. John Williams, I'm on the select board. I got a prepared statement. I know sometimes my words get misconstrued, so it's in writing, and I circulated a couple of copies yet. Hope everyone is well. I hope this meeting can stay as civil as possible. I'd also like to remind everyone in the room that there may be some stress on our local food pantries and the coming days, so I hope to keep those organizations in our neighbors and your thoughts, and consider donating if you can. Anybody that really knows me and has met me knows that I do not like to be the bad guy. However, I do insist on trying to do things the right way, fairly in the best interest of everyone in town over the longer term. I'd like to hold people accountable and correct process so mistakes don't happen again. If I may be mean, I don't mean it, but so be it. I try to be fair, and I try to do things in the best interest of our community. I'm tired of being ignored, and I'm tired of how this town operates. I feel really badly for the residents of the Chick Hill Road. I know you're angry, and I hope you forgive me for not supporting to spend this money now. This project should have been done in one summer, not two, and certainly not three. It is this board's lack of planning, lack of bidding, and lack of oversight of contractors that has caused it to take this long. But on top of that, I can't recommend spending money I'm not confident we have. The sheet that was prepared tonight circulated, I didn't review that. It was done by Dennis and Debbie. They believe those numbers, I believe in audit financials. I'd like to say to folks that you may not always agree with me or like my decisions, but I'll give you the why. Here's the why. Back in January, February, we budgeted $135,000 to pave the Chick Hill Road, which was estimated by Lee Bryant and Josh Queer. The road had been under construction in 2024, and we paid nearly $300,000 on ditching and roadwork. So I assumed the road was largely done and took it at face value, and all that was left was paving. This amount was recommended by the board and approved by the taxpayers to be taken by the TIF. But given that account was overdrawn, more on that later, work is not to begin until August of this year with fiscal taxes rolled in. I'm going to skip this section in the interest of time, I hope I fast-forward enough. I sent six emails in August to early September, four to the town and two to our chair, asking for a Chick Hill start date. Never received the date, never received budgets or plans or anything on remaining Chick Hill Road work to ensure we were on track. I never received answers to any of my emails or questions despite asking multiple times. Fast-forward to last couple of weeks ago, we received a bill for over $140,000 in roadwork, including $40,000 in gravel and other material. I was told that all that was left for this road project was paving. As a board member and taxpayer, I feel lied to, and I'd like some answers. The excuse that we're over budget because there's lots of rocks in Clifton and things are rocky doesn't work for me because I was told all we needed to do was pave. Should be no rocks, the road's already done. My line of work, I find it hard to do business with people that are not honest and transparent, so where's the truth here? Getting to the money piece, I'm constantly told we have plenty of money. I'm a banker, and I'm here to tell you that based on the reviewed financials, which you all see online on the state's website, the Piscatawkey TIF account was overdrawn by $18,000 to start this year. How that happens is a different issue and is also unacceptable. So by my projections...
That's ridiculous. Come on. I make a motion, we let John finish.
I second that.
No, three minutes is three minutes. No, we don't, three minutes each.
We have a motion on the floor.
And a second.
But if he can finish, so can everybody else who has a problem.
That is not a problem, he's a slackman, and he knows what he's talking about.
That's your thing.
I think that's a majority.
Doesn't...
I make a motion, we just vote on it.
If you would like to vote to reconsider the time limit, we tend to sell.
I agree.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor, I think it should remove the three-minute time limit. Second, okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed? Okay, we are removing the time limit.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And now I can stop talking so fast. I don't like to talk that fast, but really appreciate it. So getting to the money piece of it, I'm constantly told we have plenty of money. I'm here to tell you that based on reviewing financials, we don't, I said that. Money is not free or endless. Piscatawkey Mountain TIF account was overdrawn by $18,000 to start this fiscal year. Look at the audits on the state website. How that happens is beyond me. But by that math, if we took in $211,000 from the Piscatawkey wind farm, added it to negative $18,000, I get less than $200. If you agree on that, good, if you don't, that's okay. We had a bill for $141,000, we appropriated $135,000. $200 minus $135 is what? 60, 65, in that range? How can we appropriate $135,000 from an account that by my projections has $60,000 to $65,000 max? I will leave folks with this. Would anyone here try to build a $500,000 house when they only had $100,000 in funding? Show our hands. I wouldn't. If there were any hands up, I don't see any. Would you do that? And would you start building your $500,000 house with $100,000? With no estimates, no bids, no plans, no specs? Or would you maybe do that before you started on building your house? Going forward, we should not be starting projects unless we have the money to finish them. Better yet, we should not start projects until we have more than enough money to finish them. We should not be committing to spend money we don't have. What we should do is learn from this. We should require planning, we should require estimates and bids in advance, and we should hold people accountable to prevent this from happening again. Thank you, and be good to one another. Have a good night.
So my, we've heard some from one of the selectmen. My question, from what sounds like it, this has gone on three years. My question is not that we should approve money for the road, the road needs to get paved. I think a lot of people agree with that. I think a lot of people are questioning the process that has gone on and hasn't been done correctly. If there was initial bid to fix the road and pave it, why are we so far over budget and why are we continuing to ask money? What, how is the contract written? Is contract written like, you have $200,000, and when you run out, you just come back for more? I don't think a lot of people run with contracts like that. I know if I was building a house, I wouldn't do it that way either. So I think I need more answers on how we got to this point and where was the failure in the process? Was the contract not followed? Was it not written right? Was there even a contract that the town's on? Those are my questions, and no one seems to have those answers. Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer them.
Is that you?
Okay. We do not have a contract for that particular project. We have a contract with our vendor, who has done the work appropriately. I know of no cost overrun. And I do want to add as well, there is a handout that hopefully you all picked up, that has the current fund balances. I'm not sure where John is getting his numbers, but these numbers are... These numbers are from the bank account. This is the money we have that is available for us to spend, as it says so. I do know some of the numbers he has. Some are from the appropriated funds, mixed in with the funds that are available in the account. So he's kind of confused in his numbers. This is from the bank, these are the actual numbers.
I want to know why John Williams says that we have no money, the town is broke, the Piscatawkey town is overdrawn, aware. Then why the last selectman, I select him, did he offer the Clifton final reliance, $25,000 dollars when they asked for $10,000 dollars? He motioned for $25,000 dollars. Well, why is it okay to give special interest groups more money than it is to for these people that live in our town and have waited three years, two years, they get their own done, and it should be done? Now, let's move forward from here. The money wasn't budgeted right, I guess, and we voted on it in March. So let's see the road paved, and when March comes, we'll do better next time.
Yes? I'm going to ask, is the number for this year, the 141 that we've spent on Chick Hill, correct?
Yes.
So if you take your number out of your paper
Sure.
and subtract from the commitment book amount that was committed for taxes, which was 215, 622, I believe John had the discounted amounts. So if you take that 215, 622, and subtract what you have, according to that, you've only spent $82,000.
I'm not sure where your figures come from either. We have paved everything today. All the preparatory work for that road has been paved. It's all done. All we need to cover now is the cost of paving. For paving, we're asking for $130,000 out of the Piscatawkey Fund, which has $133,317.78.
I don't think you're correct.
Well, I have the bank statement here from today, if you'd like to look at it, which says...
So look at the commitment book. Because you have transferred money into the general fund to finish paying that 141.
Oh, no, no, this is what we're asking for, is money to transfer into the general fund so that we can pave the road. That's what we're here for tonight.
Right, but $82,000 is what you're saying you've spent? If you subtract that from the commitment book...
No, I'm saying we have spent, everything has been paid for, and this is what's left in the fund in the handout that we prepared in the day.
I think you're wrong.
Well, that's because you have wrong figures. You're missing, you're doing the same thing as John. You're mixing up the appropriated funds with the available funds.
No, so appropriated funds are like 130,000.
Okay, we're not going to argue. You each state what you believe to be correct. I just want to educate a little bit on the appropriated funds, what people vote on every year. You literally have to start from day one, from the appropriations 2017, when this started. And then you appropriate, what you don't use continues down to that next year. Say if you had asked for $150,000, you only used 50. $100,000 goes forward of that appropriations. It does not have to be voted on again. So it carries over to the next year. If you appropriate $150,000, you add that other $100,000 to that. That's how the TIF works. Am I wrong?
Well, I mean, the auditor says that the account balance was negative $18,000.
Appropriations.
Right.
Right, not the account fund balance.
How can the account have $20,000?
That is the appropriations, Jeff. That is negative. So we overspent in the appropriation part of it, not in our bank account. We have $274,000, as of yesterday, in the Piscatawkey Mountain account.
But why does the transfers in then match the entire tax bill? It's not what we appropriated.
That's what she transferred in for the tax money. That's what we got.
Correct. But you can't spend more than you take in, or else you have a negative income.
That's, I have a line, we are pretty much on radar on the entire return of the appropriations.
Yeah.
That's how it works. That's how we were taught, through training.
I went to most of the budget meetings this year, and this group, along with another person, came up with a budget. And you recommended to the people to take, I don't remember the figure, I don't have it in front of me, it's not on the website, but we voted to take, I'm going to say $140,000 out of the TIF to hot-top the Chick Hill Road. That passed, we voted. In the budget meetings, it was all about finishing the road. In the budget meetings, the question was asked, what is this for? All we need to do is hot-top. All the culverts been done, all the road work has been done. All we need to do is hot-top, and this is a quote, 130, 135,000, whatever. I went to the budget meetings, most of the people in it didn't. I did, that's what was discussed. So we have already voted to spend this money, to hot-top that road. But somehow, there had to be another $141,000 of work that we didn't know needed to be done? That needed to be done? That's not, that's not good town business, I'm sorry. Can anyone explain to me?
The article did not say hot-top.
It did not, but I went to all the budget meetings, and I heard the discussions in them. And that's what it was for. And that's what the quote was, it was said, that's the quote of hot-top. That is to say, we had the money. If we knew we had to spend another $140,000 on dirt, culverts, whatever, that should have been asked for at that time. What happened? Why didn't we knock this out? Is there any planning at all?
No, Josh, we're going to get a free ride.
Could anyone answer my question?
I don't, I don't have an answer for you. I don't know what was left to prepare for that road. I have no idea. I don't remember whether we talked, I assume you're correct that we talked about paving. I don't remember that conversation. But that's what, the ultimate goal is to get the road paved. There was work that had to be done. We're not having to do work just for the sake of doing work. It was work, perhaps somebody on that road is well aware of the work that was done this year better than I was, but it was work that needed to be done.
In a, there is so much work. What turns around the corner, goes on further, and starts material over and over. And that's regarding about two and a half feet?
I'm not arguing work done, work not done. I'm saying, I heard the budget meetings, and I heard we needed $135,000 to finish this road for these poor people that have had the road for two years. And I would, that's what I heard, that's what was discussed. And evidently, the select board doesn't know what's going on with the roads because that was the budget meeting, we were working on the budget for the road.
Well, yes?
All right, so I'm a resident of Chick Hill. So, and what was it, about two years ago, two, three years ago? Surveying tax, states went, all the number of, you know, anything about it. It wasn't until I came in, talked to Debbie, said that they were surveying this new road project, okay, fine, and whatever. Fast-forward, I come home from working, my road is passing. There is branches everywhere, it is a switch trail. I got flat tires from it, called Debbie. They sorted it out. So there's been zero communication amongst the citizens to, or, from the citizens of Chick Hill. I've talked to Diane, I've talked to a bunch of my other neighbors. Not one of us knew what was going on until it was happening that day. My wife, who was home one day, all of a sudden calls me, saying the house is shaking. Come to find out, they're rolling the road. She sent me a video, the house is legitimately shaking. All of the mason jars vibrating on the shelves. My dogs looted it. That's zero quality of life. Hold on. The, when they started clearing out the, clearing the way, because apparently the town owns, or owns an easement, however many feet, I've heard 16, I've heard 32, I had come to realize that Clifton isn't the shining star when it comes to me. So if that sign is correct, 1848, you had a few centuries to figure out how to run a town. I don't care about the money. You guys said that the road was going to be paved. It's not. I wouldn't have come to this podunk town 10 years ago onto a paved road just to know there's going to go be regrets. Just because it's over the current amount, that's fine. You guys don't have X-ray vision to see what's under the ground. You can't see if there's organic material. You're trying to do it right the first time. It should have been a learning experience doing whatever road that was, screwing hill. I heard that that was an absolute logistical nightmare and legal nightmare. It is what it is, it should have been a learning moment, so that way, the following roads were done correctly through the proper channels. Yes, things went overboard. That's why there's other funds here that are everywhere. If you wait an additional year, you're going to have to do all of the groundwork all over again because, let's be honest, the plow trucks aren't graceful. They put the snow and the dirt wherever they want to go. Most of it ends up in my front yard. Most of it ends up in my front yard. Mailbox too. But it's really frustrating being here. It's hard to say I want to stay here, watching how much the citizens fight amongst each other. Because you can't agree on a simple road. It's not difficult, I've built roads before. It takes work, yes it does, it takes money, yes it does. But there are people here that have also built roads and done things, know that things go over budget. Especially in this market. You should plan for it. It's not the citizens' fault. You guys gotta do it right by any means necessary. It's as simple as that.
Is there any further discussion?
I don't know who that gentleman there is. I'm Sam Ress. I understand. Few months ago, he asked, how come we don't have a contract or anything else with it? And nobody, you guys couldn't answer that. It's time that we do have a contract and somebody wants to come in. Some of this public wants to come in and take a look at that contract. We have a legal right to do that. A lot of you guys up there are violating our First Amendment right so bad, it's not even funny. And it's time that you guys are being held responsible for this contract. It's an open check roll. I've been in this business for 42 years myself. Prices, you know what, we don't know, we just let it go. The price that was done so far, we want another $130,000 to pave that road is incredible. And we need somebody to be there and listen to the town people and tell the town people what is going on with Chick Hill and other foot roads. Examples, State College Road, gone already. Gone, the pavement's gone, the shoulders are gone. It's a, it's a disaster. Scott Fornier, same one. Every road that we pave is gone. We can't keep spending money just to say, well, we're gonna pave the road. We can't keep doing this, guys. We can't, taxes keep going up. We can't keep doing this. You guys have to be responsible.
Any further discussion?
I make a motion with a question. Second.
Great. So the article question is, shall the town appropriate for the town's share of the Piscatawagis tax increment financing tip, an additional amount of $130,000 to finalize the Chick Hill Road capital road improvements? The select board recommends $130,000. All those in favor?
Is that 2025? Yeah, is that, is that this year?
It's now.
Monday.
Monday.
Okay. Approved, it's Monday.
John is there. Raise your hand.
Okay, all those opposed? Yeah, sorry, can you put them up against your post?
Yeah, yeah, we vote that 23 to 23. So... We can just like raise your hand high.
Yeah, all those in favor?
Three people are outside, they're...
You ask them to come in, right?
They're just, John's...
No. I'm hoping to bring him in, you say? I'm gonna bring him in, I'll get him in.
He just was here, let's wait a second.
He's hurting white, sorry, I was trying to... This is John, I'm talking for him.
Okay, alright, everyone up high, those in favor? Five to two, three, take three outside, four.
Motion to conduct a written vote? Second.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. Can we, can we...
Yes, to move forward with the project, no? Okay, the results of the written vote are one blank, 24 yes and 27 no. The article does not pass. We have a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Alright, thank you.